Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, August 16th, New Franklin Council meeting. We have one, two, three resolutions. The first reading, resolution number 23R70, Mr. Cotts.
Open up your committee meeting. We're ready.
Thank you. We will open the Finance Committee at 6:00. Our first reading is 23R70, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Summit County Budget Commission, and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Summit County Fiscal Officer and declaring an emergency. And this is just something that we do every year. They send it out to us about this time every year, and we say, "Okay." Questions, comments? Pretty simple thing. Comfortable waiting in the three?
Yes, sir.
All right. We will ask for waiting in the three. Moving on to our next resolution would be resolution number 23R71. Mr. Powell.
So this is a resolution to authorize approval of a proposal from Cabanau Building Corp. for excavation and installation of a sewer lateral at City Hall and declaring an emergency. This is a project we kind of talked about a little bit last, the last meeting. The parking lot's going to be getting paved, and we, you know, staff probably had on this one, which is great. Let's put the sewer lateral in. That way we don't have to tear up the parking lot in a few years. The resol, or the proposal come back, looks at $15,000. It looks like we're providing the pipe and some of the trucking services and stuff. And Cabanau's doing the excavation, installation of the sewer. Any questions on this? Everybody comfortable waiting in the three?
Yeah. And this, this actually turned out to be a great price for us. I think, Mr. Kepler said we got another bid for over $20,000. So we've done work with Cabanau before, and they've done this great job, and it was a surprisingly great price, so we appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you.
You want to close the meeting?
I was going to, yes, thank you. We'll close the Finance Committee at 6:02.
Resolution number 23R68, and I think Mr. Cotts is going to get also?
Yes, we will open the Community Development Committee at 6:02. This is the second reading on a resolution authorizing a collaboration of policing services between the City of New Franklin and Springfield Township and declaring an emergency. And this is resolution 23R68. I understand we still have some outstanding questions that we'll wait on some answers, and we're going to ask to take another reading on this. It's a great thing we want to discuss tonight about it.
The question was raised, and a good question as to, in the event that there's an injury or an accident, where does the liability fall? So we think we know, but we're trying to get, we're looking for a definite answer on that. And we'll get that, we expect we'll have that to you well in advance of the third reading, and decide what direction to go. It's really, it's probably going to be a matter of luck, as opposed to a matter of trying to tweak this specific MOU, but we'll find out.
And I would, I mean, I'm assuming they're being paid with like a $10.99 or something, a little more informal. And if that's the case, I, I think they may be kind of out of luck, because if they're not being paid in that building in Franklin, I don't know that they would be covered by our workers comp on that. And it's just kind of a gray area.
It is.
And like, excuse me, like I mentioned before, I think the only department I really have is that, at one location, if you go there, you realize there's a lot of potential for conflict. And other than, I completely get all the other stuff, traffic control and stuff like that. It's just that one location seems to stand out as a potential, it's a known risk of input.
Anybody else? Okay, so we will ask for time and close the Community Development Committee at 6:04.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Anything? And I'd like to call with order the regular scheduled Wednesday, August 16th meeting of New Franklin is 6:04. We're going to raise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, which is states, one condition under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Hargett?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Present.
Mr. Stock?
Here.
Can I like to make the motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 2nd, 2023?
Second.
Do we have a first and a second? Mr. Hargett?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Now, do I need to adopt a motion to approve the financials for July 2023, subject to audit?
Second.
Have a first and a second? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargett?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Does anyone in the public have a thought? And we'll begin with our first reading, resolution number 23R70.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Summit County Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Summit County Fiscal Officer and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to wait the three readings on resolution 23R70.
Second. Do we have a first and a second, Kevin? Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargett?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution 23R70.
Second. Have a first and a second? Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargett?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Resolution number 23R70.
A resolution to authorize approval of a proposal from Cabanau Building Corporation for excavation and installation of the sewer lateral at City Hall and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee and moved to wait for three.
Starting.
Have a first and a second? Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargett?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones? Motion to adjourn. On, sir.
You can vote.
Fifteen seconds.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 23?
Did she vote?
No.
You, you have to vote unhealthy, do you vote?
You have to say yes. Yes. Good, adjourn.
Make a motion to adopt 23R71?
Okay.
Do we have a first and a second, Kevin? Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargett?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Second reading, resolution number 23R68.
A resolution authorizing a collaboration of policing services between the City of New Franklin and Springfield Township and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Community Development Committee, and we're going to ask for time on resolution 23R68.
I'm Mr. Hargett. We have no third reading and no ending of discussion, so we have our favorite time. Please.
Really didn't have time to warm up here, but, you know, that's okay. All right. Summer barbecue was a big success. Many of you were present. 260 people sold out, 27 table sponsors. Virtually all of our, you know, are just a all-star group of our local businesses and the people who do business with us. So it just was a great, great affair, I think, and that's all we heard all the way around the board. So, great venue, thank the Lord for the great weather, and thanks for all the participation. It's very, very much appreciated. We don't have final numbers, we'll get them out to you as soon as we do. Likewise, the Dragon Boat was a big success. Our City of New Franklin team, raise your hand if you're in the boat pulling. Pull, pull, grab. Either one. All right. So, yeah, we had some, and, and we finished second out of 27 teams total. And had our personal best in every race, and, but, and the weather cooperated. A great affair for the City of New Franklin, because most of the people there, 1,000 anyway, people there, were from outside of the city. So they get a chance to see the venue and enjoy the hospitality. And most importantly, are the, are the folks that are honored there, the breast cancer survivors, bearing out here sponsoring a team or two. And we had over $1,500 donated by the City of New Franklin. Thanks in large part to many of you sitting up there that did, were able to donate. So just another great Dragon Boat event for the City of New Franklin. The, many of you got letters, most of us did, from the fiscal office saying that your property taxes are, that your appraised value of your property has increased, has been increased. I'm not going to go through the whole litany of how and the whys. It has to do with triangles and every six years, and then this year they only use, I guess I am going to do it. They only use the comps from one year back instead of three years back for the comparable sales, and that one year was a good year to compare to, given the fact with the crazy housing numbers. But in any event, there are opportunities to discuss your appraisal with somebody from the fiscal office. We've posted this before, I'll post it again. You can have an online meeting, you can have a telephone conference, or you can attend one of their in-person meetings. And there's a list of those, I will, they've added a couple, they added one in Barbados, and it's all the way out September 13th. I'll put that on the website. Those are mostly informational sessions. What we were told, what you can learn a little bit further, if that number is going to be, and there's a chance that your appraisal can be adjusted at that meeting, but you're probably going to need something by way of more than just your opinion. You know, the best would be an appraisal, an independent appraisal. If you have an independent appraisal, for whatever reason, it comes lower than this, I should have asked you, you could have probably told me all of this, but, then they may adjust it on that basis. If you can provide them with some comparable sales in your neighborhood, and sort of do your own quasi appraisal and present it with that, they may consider that as well. Once that process is completed, there'll be a final determination, and then you have an independent right to appeal that as well. And the fiscal office is going to encourage you people to, to use that option if you feel like you're being overappraised. I'm not going to, the, if you Google Summit County Fiscal Office, it'll direct you to where you have to go to make the appointment for the, for the discussion, and it'll outline for you how you, subsequently how you might go through the appeal process. The latest piece of information I got on this, and it was qualified by everybody who spoke, that, "Don't hold me to this." Okay? So I'm saying, "Don't hold me to this," because that's what it was presented to me. But it was presented from people that involved in the county who have a, you know, have reason to make a good guesstimate. And you may have heard this as well, that the increase in the valuation is not equal to the increase in the, of the property tax. So if your valuation went up 30%, that doesn't mean your property taxes are going to go up 30%. They have a broad rule of thumb that's been passed around the state that, that if your, if your valuation went up 30%, then your taxes will probably go up about 5%. So, you know, that's a little more helpful. And it got extended to, it was extended that they expect most of these increases to be in the range of 5% to 8%. So they're going to be tough, but maybe not as, well, at least they're not 30%. So that's what's going on with real estate taxes. Check our website or Google Summit County Fiscal Office, and you can get more information there. The paving is largely completed, there's a little bit of finish-up work, there's a couple places where the edge is a little higher, and they're trying to add a berm to it, but by and large, I think, people are pretty satisfied with the paving. Cleveland Massillon sure looks nice. So, so that is largely, pretty much behind us, except we haven't done the parking lot here yet. And that'll happen in about three weeks or so, three or four weeks, after we get the lateral in. So we're getting the lateral in first. Okay. Let's see, the Parks Commission met at Grill Park last night, and we met with some residents from Grill Park, and we're going to expand that group of Grill Park folks interested over there in Grill Park. But the discussion with the Parks Commission is in terms of next year's projects, what we might do with, what they may want to do with that, with those funds. And the preliminary discussion centers on adding some swings and a pavilion, not the size of Sizzler, a little bit smaller. The folks that we talked to like that idea. There's some asphalt, there's an asphalt section that we're likely going to tear up and plant grass, because it has no purpose. And we had a real good discussion with those folks. And we've been meeting with some vendors for the equipment, so, and then down the road, we may add more equipment down there. But we're going to, we're figuring about polling, doing some polling over there for the community and find out, you know, who's going to use this, before we spend a lot of money on recreational equipment. If there's not a lot of kids in the neighborhood, they're going to come down and use it. So Parks Commission is moving at a nice pace on that. Speaking of pavilions, and the Sizzler Pavilion is now completed, and we want to do, we want to have a dedication. And I was thinking about, this may be too much in one day, or maybe not. We've got some signage coming, it's probably not going to be there until the end of the month here. So I was thinking about the Wednesday, the 6th, if we went up there at 5:00 before our meeting, and did the dedication, and then come down here for the meeting, is that too much in one day, you think?
I think we can manage.
Okay. Because everybody's kind of got that day blocked off anyway. So, all right, well, we'll tend to plan on that. And we'll be up there at 5:00 and do a dedication for the pavilion. Lastly, yep, nothing on the second page. I had a very interesting conversation this week, or actually, well, it was last week, since our last meeting, with Curtis Baker, who's the director of AMAS. And there have, as you know, there's discussion about, well, we're trying to get the sewer to 93, and believe me, we're really, 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 really busy in that regard. We're getting numbers together, getting our OPWC application going, going down next Tuesday to meet with the Department of Development over that project itself, the State Rock Mountain 3 project. Meanwhile, we've had plenty of people for a long time who'd like to see sewer and water on 619. And separate and apart from that, there's been discussion about enhancement of that corridor, similar to what happens, you know, what might look good in other neighborhoods. The conversation with AMAS centered around a couple things. We're in, we, we, there's some, we're in a position where we could get some significant federal funding to do some things over there. Surprisingly, our busiest, 619 is our busiest thoroughfare for daily traffic. It also happens to be, it hit like the top 50 chart for accidents, which is not a good thing, but it gets AMAS attention, and it qualifies you, it opens the door for some federal funding. So without going into detail about three or four different funds, the, that could be tapped into, there was some, a preliminary estimate of about a $13 million project that would stretch from about the golf course up to State Street, which is the same stretch where, you know, if we're able to get the sewer, that's where the sewer would come. And this would involve some widening of the road, probably adding a turn lane in some of the busy sections, making it a third lane, sidewalks, streetlights, really, really nice thoroughfare over there. And the guesstimate is that we could qualify for as much as $10 million out of that $13 million. And then it would be up to us to chase the other $3 million. So this is, you know, it's came a little bit, well, I wouldn't say, you know, you have conversations, and you say, "What could be done?" And AMAS was very forthright and said, "You know, we really haven't done anything in New Franklin," you know? And, but, so that's going to be a matter of taste, and, you know, what people think makes sense, you know? There is the, we're, we're going to apply for a planning grant. We can, the application opens end of December for, for just that, for somebody to do some significant planning over there of what this will look like, what would the components be? You know, what are the people, you know, the stakeholders, what would they like to see? Obviously, we'll consult the comprehensive plan. So this is not a commitment to anything. This is just, you know, if this is something the city would like to see happen, here's a chance to make it happen. You know, part of the thinking was if the sewer and water came, eventually developers might want to come and do something with some of those properties. And then you look to them perhaps to, you know, to bear the burden of the infrastructure, but this might be a way, you know, it's, it's not inconceivable that it could all happen at one time. Sewer, water, and this, and this enhancement of that stretch right there. So we're way, way, way down the road, and it's all way ahead of us, and the first thing would be, and if the grant is a 100% grant, so about $50,000, so we're going to ask for that. AMAS would, would select a consultant to do the, to do the plan. And we'll keep you the price of that one, but I want to get you on the front end of that one. So that's all I got.
Yeah, it's fabulous, thank you. Do we have any key to the comprehensive plan? I don't believe it. Ms. Susan?
Audit report? Well, everything's pretty much the same as last week. We're still working on the audit, and they were out for a date last week, and are still taking us with emails for information, but it, they, they're still looking at having the bulk of it done by the end of this month, and then hopefully closing out in September. So that will be, that will be good for us, because like, we've got plenty of things to keep us busy and stuff. But that's, that's kind of a major thing that's added on top of what we already do right now.
It is a problem. Thank you, Susan. Do we have any old business?
I just wanted to remind people that we've got the toucher truck coming up on September 2nd, and during that same time, the scouts will be having their breakfast next door.
And what time do they start? Give us your breakfast.
I think their breakfast is starting at 8:00.
8:00, and at 7:00, they get everything.
Yeah, it's going to be a full, full breakfast, I think it goes to 11:00, somewhere around there. The toucher truck is for 9:00.
I did miss one announcement I wanted to make. The, and this is, it's going to, it impacts you if you're on the west side. Norton has started their work, or is starting their work on Eastern Road, and effective Monday for 45 days, we put it on our website, Eastern Road will be closed from Cumbell to Taylor. So if you're used to going up Cleveland Massillon and cutting up Eastern to get to 21, you're not going to get that. All right. You'll have to follow the detours, I'm not exactly sure what they are.
Can you go over to Taylor and cut over?
Yeah, you can do grill. Grill to Taylor, right? Yeah, okay. All right. So that'll be for 45 days there. Part of that process, before, at the end of that 45 days, there'll be a break there. And so we've been invited to a photo shoot, and I'm not sure if... Well, it's, it's going to happen, it's going to happen, so. Heads up on that.
We've talked in the past, and there's been some concerns from the residents, and in the past, we felt that it wasn't necessary. But that stop sign at Cumbell and Vanderhook, and making that into a four-way stop, I imagine traffic's going to increase. And, and I know when I drive that route, for whatever reason, even though I know, I believe that's a four-way stop, it's just, it's just an intersection that looks like a four-way stop. I don't know if there's anything we can do about it like now, because with, with the added traffic that's going to be coming down that road.
Yeah, I, I was on it yesterday. We were at Grill Park. And I went that way, and when I came back, you know, on Cumbell out of Grill Park, you just think it is, you know? And as I, as I was turning the corner, I said, "I understand what, how people feel." And I had a similar thought, that if we're going to do it now, it'd probably be a pretty good time, before it opens up again.
People use it?
Yeah, yeah. And coincidentally, I just came up Pearlman on the way here, and we still have, and we put that four-way stop in there, which we've got good reviews on, we still have the lighted stop sign. I guess just because we didn't need it anywhere else. But I think if we install that with the lighted stop signs, and I believe that we, I, I'll check again. I don't think we need anybody's, I don't think we need state consent, we need state consent on that one.
It's not a state route.
Yeah, exactly.
So it should be.
I think we can just make that decision. I'll talk to Brian again about it, but anybody on council feels strongly against it?
No, I don't. I think that both of you, because you're two pretty good guys, I think that both of you felt that way. And I would say most people do. Come on in, it's a compliment.
Well, well, I appreciate that. I, I appreciate that, because I think we should ask the four representative.
Yeah.
I agree with you, what I'm saying to you, it sounds like it could help you too.
What's your thoughts, Mike?
I have to say that, because I live right around by there, I think that's a great idea, to be quite honest with you. And that's, a lot of people use that road, and there'll be more traffic once that's opened back up. So be proactive and do this before, I think it's a great idea. Well, very well put.
Excellent. Well, I'll talk to Brian, but if I find some reason we can't, I'll let you know. Otherwise, we'll get it done. Okay, good.
When is the closing again?
21st.
No, it's closing 15th.
It says the sign says always 21st. It's next Monday.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I knew it was next Monday, I was thinking next Monday was the 15th.
I was going to stop that clock here.
Give us some more time.
I was going to mention that, so you got me. Thanks, I go, that's the way I go all the time.
So you know, okay.
Yeah, all right. They're doing like the utilities, moving utilities and stuff right now. So that road's been, for the last couple weeks, flagged and stopped and started.
All right.
Do we have anything for old business? Any new business? I guess, semi-old, if I might ask. Have we found out any more about trying to renegotiate Main Street? When they asked when you done, you said you were trying to renegotiate when it was going to be dropped.
Well, as far as I know, there hasn't been any, there's been no new contract signed, but I'm being told off the cuff that, you know, their intention is to have it done by December, but it's nothing official at this point.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Powell, have any?
Well, when the interest rate needed that, we got that done right away, didn't we? Didn't we? I mean, we got it done in two, like two, what was it, close to?
Eight days.
Yeah. Everybody else is, they don't care.
I like to bring up a controversial subject, and I know it's going to trigger some people, and I apologize ahead of time, so please don't hate me for what I'm about to say. And everybody has their own opinion, and it's important that everybody has their own opinion. This evening, Jenner and I ordered a pizza from Randino's. It was so, it was so, they do a great job at Randino's. They make a great product. I'm not looking to get into a pizza war with anybody. We have, we have a lot of great pizza places in New Franklin. But for me, Randino's is just fantastic, I love their product. And a couple that run it, they're, they're there, they're working hard, they're friendly, they're, they're good people. So if you have an opportunity and you want to try something different, if you haven't tried it before, give them a call, 330-644-7521.
That was your big controversy? Said that was your big controversy?
Oh, yeah.
I thought we were, I thought we were going to have to fight or something. Pizza thing?
I did too. But I'm going to say to you, he does that shit.
Yeah.
It's good, man, it's good.
And it was, he liked to unpack yourself.
Yeah, I get well done. Oh, man, this little burner on the edges.
This is the pizza man, we can tell. Does anyone in the public have a comment, question?
Favorite pizza?
I'm an apple wood, she's got it, but that's it.
Well.
Yeah, Mayor, any update on the defibrillator for Sizzler?
The defibs are in.
The boxes aren't.
Yeah, boxes aren't. The units themselves are, but the boxes that they're housed in are not in yet. So we're on it, and we're giving some thought to exactly where. We got two for Sizzler, and one'll be by the ball fields, one by tennis, but now we're also talking about, we're installing, as you know, lights and camera there, and we're trying to, now we're talking about making sure that the camera zooms, you know, checks the box, and they're going to have the GPS things in case somebody tries to walk away with it. So we're moving, yes. And we don't know when the boxes are expected, but, you know.
Also, are we going to set up some training for people to use those at Sizzler?
Good idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Because I have like three groups, that I'd like to send one person from each group.
Yeah, okay. Sure, that's a good idea. When we get them in and get ready to put up, we should have some training. When we get them in and get ready to put up, we should have some training right here.
I think a lot of those, they give you verbal prompts to walk through.
They do, even when, the ones that we have out here, which have been here for a long time, even back then, they told us when they put them up, they verbally tell you what to do.
They tell you all. Yeah, they still, they still do recommend the training.
Can't hurt, sure.